So I'm Harrison Merzide, you probably already know me. I'm a sophomore from Dallas, Texas. I stream for Fiveable and I have been streaming since, when was it, January, I guess was my first stream? And my first stream is actually AP, so this is my first Fiveable class. Welcome to the AP Environmental Science Q and A Student Led Study Session. There are some questions already in the Ask a Question section, which I'll get to. Cindy wants to take one of those, so I'll kind of leave that one for her. But, yeah, so I will get started. I have a special slide for answering questions here that I may or may not have stolen from another AP streamer, but don't tell. Alright, so Samantha says, can we go over the different bio-ge biochemical cycles and what we need to know? Is Samantha here? In the chat, so I know that she's actually here to listen to my answer to her question? Yes, Samantha is here. Perfect, so I'm going to screen share a Fiveable resource. So bio-ge biochemical cycles, they're kind of, they're kind of an iffy subject in APs, if you ask me, because you need to know four of them, but you don't really need to know them like perfectly, like you don't need to know every step. It's not like that special. This isn't like AP Chem or Bio, like you don't need to know every single step of it. You just need to have the general idea. So I would make this like Fiveable page bigger if I could, but I can't because Cindy is the head streamer today and she's having wifi issues. So I'm gonna post the link to the page that I'm on right now. It's the Unit 1 Fiveable Study Guide page, so if you go there and you watch my stream and you read the study guides, I don't think you can score Olympics points in two tabs, but it was worth a shot. So, so we have AP Study Guides and there are four different bio-ge biochemical cycles that these guides cover. So I'm gonna try to read each of them. Okay, so it's loading. It's a loading page. So hopefully you guys are pulling up the window while my computer is taking forever to load. I really hope you are. Okay, so it doesn't look like it's going to work. So I can just talk about it. So the carbon side. Oh, no, it is working. Woohoo! No, I do not want to make this tab the one that scores Olympics points because I'm streaming and that is unethical. Alright, so the carbon cycle. So I really hope you can see this image again. I was hoping to make it bigger, but Cindy is having some wifi issues. Let me see if she's back in. Um, so carbon cycle. So there are three main forms of carbon in Earth. So there's carbon dioxide, which is a gas. We have carbon, just like straight up carbon in the Earth's surface, and then we also have carbon in fossil fuels. So carbon is found in coal, it's found in oil and natural gas. We use it for a lot of our fossil fuels and we use it for a lot of our energy. So the thing you need to know about the carbon cycle is that plants take in carbon dioxide in photosynthesis and humans and plants and all animals let carbon dioxide out of their bodies through cellular respiration. So with the cellular respiration, that's when we're putting CO2 back into the atmosphere and plants are taking CO2 out of the atmosphere through photosynthesis. Humans are taking CO2 away from the Earth's surface when we extract fossil fuels and then humans are putting CO2 back into the atmosphere when we are burning fossil fuels. So the problem with burning fossil fuels is we're putting the CO, the carbon back in a place where we didn't find it. So we found the carbon in the, um, we found the carbon under the Earth's surface in fossil fuels, but we're putting the carbon back into the atmosphere, which is a problem and that's why we have the issues with rising global temperatures. So I'm gonna go back to the Study Guides page and we're gonna talk about the next cycle, the nitrogen cycle. So after it loads, I'll start by talking about the steps of the nitrogen cycle. So the only people who can convert atmospheric nitrogen, we just into, seventy-eight percent of our atmosphere is nitrogen, the only people who can convert nitrogen are bacteria. Bacteria are the converters of nitrogen. So humans can't just take in pure nitrogen. Plants, bacteria on the roots of plants must take it in. So you can see that there are nitrogen fixing soil bacteria and then nitrogen fixing bacteria that live in the roots of different plants. And then, so that's nitrogen fixation, the first step of the process. And then after that, you have nitrification. So nitrification is when nitrogen fixing bacteria convert that into, into something that things can use, ammonia, ammonium, you know, all of those things and specialized bacteria can then in the next step of the process convert the ammonium to NO2 and then the ammonia to NO3. So then after that, we have assimilation, which is when the nitrogen gets taken up in the plant's roots as proteins or as nucleotides. And then after that, you have denitrification, which is when nitrogen is released back into the atmosphere as a gas into. And then our next cycle is gonna be the phosphorus cycle. Now, there isn't really much you need to know about the phosphorus cycle. There is one thing you need to know for the APs exam about the phosphorus cycle. It does not have a gas phase. Phosphorus is the only major cycle that you have to learn in AP that does not have a gas phase. Carbon has CO2, nitrogen has N2, sulfur has SO2, sulfur dioxide, hydrologic cycle, water, we have water vapor, a gas. But with phosphorus, there is no gas form of phosphorus. That's the really only thing you need to know about phosphorus. But with the water cycle, the water cycle is probably something that you learned in about, I can say that I learned it in about third grade, I think. Yeah, I learned the water cycle in third grade. So basically you learn that water comes down to the Earth from the sky and rain, it gets pulled back up into the sky through evaporation. Maybe you learn later in life, you learned about condensation and how things, when they're sitting out in the sun on a hot day, the water comes directly. But there's really one more thing about the water cycle that we add in APs, and that's called evapotranspiration. So water is probably one of the most important bio-ge biochemical cycles because it has evapotranspiration. So all water that has been evaporated or transpired is known as evapotranspiration. So plants are the ones who complete the whole, plants are the ones who complete the whole evapotranspiration process because they take it in their leaves instead of pulling water up through their roots in the soil like they normally do. So you see a lot of trees that do evapotranspiration. And Tanya asks, hydrologic cycle is just another name for it? Yes. Hydrologic, hydro meaning water, logic meaning, well, I don't know, I could just use logic to figure out that hydrologic means water cycle. So Samantha, I hope that I defined bio-ge biochemical cycles well enough for you. So I'm gonna put like a little checkmark emoji there since I can't clear these out because Cindy is not here. So, oh yes, so Tanya actually brought up a good point. So hydrologic is the name for the water cycle, but hydraulic is a kind of fracking. So you guys haven't really talked about fracking in APs because that's really more of a Unit 6 and 9 like crossover subject. That's not really like, just, you know, it's not just a Unit 6 concept because fracking is more of like a debatable issue and it's all about global change and stuff. So you guys haven't really talked about fracking a lot, so you don't have to worry about the word hydrologic. Hydro, hydraulic fracking coming up on your AP exam. It's also known as hydraulic fracturing because they're fracturing into the Earth's surface and that's where it got the name fracking. It's like the shorthand for it. But now I want to talk about another question that I saw. So don't worry about hydrol, hydraulic fracturing or hydraulic fracking or just fracking on your AP exam because you probably won't see it. If you see hydrologic, they're gonna be talking about the water cycle. So now, somebody else in the Ask a Question section, I think that it was, was it Matthew? No, it was Dakota. Dakota, if you're here, I'm gonna go over the Coriolis effect. So Dakota, the Coriolis effect is about global wind patterns and I don't know, my screen should be sharing, but it does not look like it is. Looks like my computer's having issues today and I don't have Cindy here on the Fiveable account, so I'm sorry about the technical difficulties in the stream, guys. I don't know what happened to Cindy. This was supposed to be her streamed ahead, so. After I talk about the Coriolis effect for a little bit, I'm gonna go check on Sydney and then I can get back to you on the Haber process, Matthew, since you asked about that one. So I'm taking most of these answers that I'm getting about the different cycles and all the questions that you ask. I'm gonna try to get these from Fiveable Study Guides. So let me post the link to the study guide that I'm reading. Cody Williams, a former AP streamer, wrote this study guide and this part is from Unit 4, which is about the atmosphere and soil. And so this part of the study guide is about global wind patterns. This one's about the atmosphere. So if you wanna click on it in the chat, Coriolis effect is at the bottom of the page. So basically, Coriolis effect is the reason why winds don't go in a straight line. So the Earth is curved, right? Unless you believe and you're like a flat-earther or something, which if you are, you can leave this AP stream. There are twenty-five people here. I can appreciate only twenty-four if I had a flat-earther in here. But, um, the Earth is round, right? So the Coriolis effect is why things don't move in a straight line around the Earth. Because the Earth is curved, things move in a special way that's opposite of how we think of them. Sometimes the Coriolis effect is a confusing topic, but I really like Cody's explanation here. So he said to draw a straight line on a spinning cup. The line will be curved because the cup is spinning. So as the Earth is spinning, things are moving in a circular pattern, even if you don't realize it. They're not just going straight across. So when I throw this pin straight at you, right at my computer, it actually curved down because A, gravity, but B, it didn't just go down because of gravity, it also curved a little bit because of the rotation of the Earth. Now, if I threw a much heavier object over a much longer time period and I went in slow-mo, I might be able to see the actual Coriolis effect in action. And you guys can just see that I have earned twenty thousand points for being on the Fiveable stream page or hosting the stream with you guys. So Coriolis effect is basically things just move in opposite patterns of the way they think they do because the Earth is round and not flat. So I hope that explained that for you, Dakota. Um, so I'm gonna get to Tanya's question and Matthew's question in a second, but I really wanna go check on Cindy right now. So give me a second to text her, please. Sorry, guys, this is really unprofessional stream etiquette. I'm just trying to get Cindy back because this is her. While I'm doing this, I'll talk to you guys. So this is gonna be Cindy's first livestream ever for Fiveable. So if you guys wanna welcome her to Fiveable in the chat, that would be awesome. So when she comes back, she can see that. But Cindy is doing her first Q and A stream today because she and I are gonna be streaming with Mr. Joshua Nielsen, the AP's cram teacher for the five-hour cram session. So the night before the exam, from 4:00 PM Eastern to 9:00 PM Eastern, we're gonna be hosting a five-hour, yes, you heard me right, five-hour cram session to help you prepare for the exam. So you can either get into this five-hour cram session by having a cram pass or by, I think around tomorrow, we're releasing a platform where you can just pay five dollars to get into just the five-hour cram session. So, um, I hope that you guys really do get excited about that because Cindy, Mr. Joshua and I have been planning this, what we're gonna do during the stream, what activities we have, all sorts of other things and other stuff. So I really hope you come. I've just texted Cindy and I'm waiting for a response on her. We might actually be hosting another AP's Q and A tomorrow if Cindy does not get back to me and she's still having wifi issues. So, oh, Cindy's back! Welcome back, Cindy! Cindy, Cindy. Oh my gosh, I'm having such trouble speaking today. You can't get your mic and camera working. Yeah, I see she's in the chat. Tanya, thanks. Um, so, how can I troubleshoot this? I'm not logged in as Fiveable right now. I'm logged in on my personal account because I'm a secondary streamer. Sorry, guys, I'm gonna talk through how I can help Tanya, uh, help Cindy fix this. Um, Samantha, hmm, I'm logged in as myself right now. Um, so you guys, if you're on the Fiveable stream page, like where you're gonna get Olympics points and stuff, that's great, stay here. What I think is about to happen is I'm about to stop the stream and cancel it, but stay on the page. Like I promised I'm coming back. Like I just have to do this to cancel the stream real quick. So stay on. I promise we'll be back in like two minutes. If we're not back in two minutes, have Samantha text me. Yeah, actually Samantha, can you log in as the Fiveable account real quick? Thank you. That might make this a lot easier so I don't have to stop the stream. Okay. So while we're doing that, I will answer some more AP's questions. So Matthew asks about the Haber process. Now, I don't have a study guide for the Haber process, but I can help explain it to you. So the Haber process is what combines hydrogen and nitrogen and makes them into ammonium. So this ammonium can be used in synthetic fertilizers, which, um, kind of makes you draw the flowchart of the Haber process, which makes ammonium and other nitrate compounds that you can put in synthetic fertilizer. Then when we have runoff, that synthetic fertilizer is getting into lakes and streams and then those lakes and streams are going to, you know, have eutrophication zones. Um, so the Haber process is really what allows synthetic fertilizers to be a thing. It creates the nutrients that, um, you know, we use in synthetic fertilizer. Cindy has just texted me for help, so I'm gonna help her real quick. Give me ten seconds, y'all. I don't care if you count to ten because I am already ready to come back to y'all. Okay. So, um, technically, this is a monification, but it's a monification on a synthetic level. The Haber process was created by a guy named Fritz Haber and also his partner Carl Bosch that allows hydrogen and nitrogen to be combined to make ammonium. So this is the, this is the process we use to create synthetic fertilizer. Does that make more sense, Tanya? It's kind of like taking the natural life science process of like a monification in the nitrogen cycle and then making it into a synthetic fertilizer that we can use to increase our productivity and like our high yields in farming. Alright, so I hope that that helped. So it only makes a little bit of sense. Oh! It looks like we have Fiveable here. Is this, it's Cindy. Okay, Samantha, please do not log in as Fiveable. I hope you can hear me. Hello, Cindy, you're back! Yay! Right, so while you're gone, Cindy, um, we kinda talked about the Haber process, the Haber and Bosch process. We talked about the Coriolis effect and bio-ge biochemical cycles. So does anybody have any questions besides Tanya's in the Ask a Question section? Does anybody else have any AP's questions that Cindy can help answer?
Um, I think I answered the Coriolis effect and the...
Anybody else have any questions? There are twenty-seven people here. I hope that twenty-four of you are not just here for Olympics points. I hope that you guys are actually here to ask questions. Okay, so if you guys don't have any questions, do you wanna do a quick unit overview? Okay. Um, so Matthew, I'll actually take this question, Cindy, because I know. So you can take Kay Perkins's question in the chat if you see that, but I'll take Matthew's. So what math should we expect on the AP exam? The only math you should expect on the AP exam this year is gonna be basic addition, subtraction and multiplication, like basic. Because there is no proposed and environmental solution doing calculations FRQ, you're not gonna be expected to do anything like energy math. There will be no hard math on the AP's exam. The hardest math that there might be, maybe like looking at a graph and like subtracting numbers. That's, that's the only math you're gonna have to do. It's like math based on analyzing graphs. So like there's no gonna be energy math, there's not gonna be any half-life stuff. It's really just gonna be all about, you know, the concepts, explanation. Okay, so it looks like you got that. They released that no calculator was needed for APs. So, um, Cindy?
Um, so Kay asked how the test will incorporate biomes. Not sure about this year's exam, but like last time I took the FRQ, there were some questions about biomes, like I think there was tundra and tropical rainforests. So basically, you know how, um, you have to know like the distinctive points of each biome and then like, I guess, like if the FRQ asks for the kind of like part logic, I'd say. Thing that's in FRQ. So I'd say that you should know the key points of each biome and answer.
Yeah, so add on to what Cindy said, that was a pretty good explanation, but honestly, I think you'll just need to know like where each biome is located for the exam because the only way that I can incorporate it is like with a map maybe and like you have to identify where the biome is and then like propose a solution like stop global warming or something like that. That's really the only way that like I could see it if they say like, the tundra, the ice caps are melting, blah, blah, blah.
I think the tundra, it might ask about oil, but oil or ice caps melting.
Yeah, um, Tanya says maybe an experiment show a biome can transition from one to another. That's not really something you can design an investigation about, so I don't see that on the AP's exam. Cindy, you might have a different opinion, but I don't see a question like what Tanya said.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think I can do that on there. But you can like go further into like research before the exam, so you might have some background outside knowledge.
Yeah, and like I said about the Fiveable Study Guides, we have a Fiveable Study Guide on that link I posted above with the Unit Ones um, about aquatic and terrestrial biomes. So if you're really interested in those, Kay, then you can go look at the 1.2 and 1.3 study guides from that link. Biomes are just, it's just a lot of fact memorization. There's no like trends, there's no like this leads to this, which leads to this. It's literally just like memorizing facts. So I don't love them either. Um, you wanna take the next one? You wanna take Scott? Yeah.
Um, what should we know about ecosystem services?
So actually, this is something that they've incorporated more into the 2020 exam when they like kind of rewrote this CED. So I mean, I might have a little bit more insight on this since I've worked on the project with Fiveable, working at the CED before, so they've emphasized the ecosystem services more in Unit 2 than they have in past years because if you guys didn't know this, Unit 2 did not used to exist in AP Environmental Science. There used to be a few of the key points in the Unit 1, but Unit 2 did not used to exist, like it's new for this year. So with the ecosystem services, what you need to know is that there are four of them, provisioning, regulating, cultural and somebody wanna tell me the fourth one? Provisioning, cultural, regulating and, somebody wanna tell me the fourth one? Do you guys need a hint? Does anybody need a hint? Um, so it starts with an S. Does anybody wanna tell me what it is or do I just need to spit it out? So what is the fourth ecosystem service? It's regulating, cultural, regulating, cultural, provisioning, and then the next one starts with an S. No, it's not sustainability, it's supporting. Guys, you're right. So there's regulating, supporting, cultural and um, yeah, so there is a reason why you probably haven't heard of this before Samantha because I think if I remember correctly, you're one of the people who stopped studying the AP's exam and a lot of online classes haven't really changed for the new like exam format. And these are emphasized more in this year's exam than they have in previous years. Like I didn't know about these until like I learned about them myself.
Yeah, same. I haven't heard of these before.
Yeah, so cultural is mainly just like going to natural parks and experiencing like the beauty. Supporting, the ecosystem service is gonna support the other things in the ecosystem. Regulating, it's gonna help keep the ecosystem in homeostasis. And then provisioning is gonna make things. So like provisioning service for trees is gonna be like trees give us lumber, which give us, I mean, yeah, they give us lumber, which we can make into timber. Um, I can take, you can take the next question about the El Niño and La Niña wind patterns, Cindy, but I wanna answer this real quick. Um, so if you get, if you join a livestream late, you can get Olympics points. You just have to stay on the livestream for about thirty-five to forty minutes. So if you just stay with us till the end, you should be fine because if you joined at 4:30, 4:25, then you just have to be on until five o'clock and then you'll get all your Olympics points, I believe, Angelina.
Okay, um, where's that question?
Uh, something about El Niño and La Niña wind patterns, I think.
Was it asking for the difference between them?
Yes, yes. Can you please go over the El Niño and La Niña wind patterns and differences, please?
Okay, so, so El Niño and El Niña are part of ENSO or like the El Niño Southern Oscillation. So it's basically like a bunch of wind patterns and variation. So it's like climate pattern that comes every year, I guess. Um, so there's, so there are two phases of ENSO and La Niña is referred to as the cold phase and El, no. Did I say La Niña? Okay, La Niña, yeah, it's the cold phase and El Niño is the warm phase. So they, they both have impacts on ocean processes and global weather and climate changes. It's like, um, depending on where you live, like, um, if you live near the coast or, I don't know, but depending on where you live, like these like wind variations might impact your area and so like, uh, at some part of the year it might get hotter or like the wind might be drier and then they'll say, oh, this is because of El Niño. And El Niño, which is the warm phase that occurs more often than La Niña, which is the cold phase.
Um, yes, it occurs in the Pacific Ocean, Samantha. They usually occur, El Niño occurs off the coast of like Peru and Ecuador in South America and so does La Niña. El Niña, El Niño takes the conditions that are in Australia and basically moves them to Peru and then takes the conditions that were in Peru and moves them to Australia. So there's the places where it happens. But great explanation, Cindy. So let me take the next one.
Yeah, California.
They also have it.
I see Tanya's comment about El Niño. Yeah, I live in California too, like when like, you know, it's like dry and hot, it's like, oh, it's El Niño.
Okay, so Tanya asks, can you think of any crossovers between Unit 8 and 9 and Units 1 through 7, which may show up on the AP exam? This is such a complicated question. Like Cindy and I were on a Zoom call earlier planning out the five-hour cram session and I, I think I've said this like three times. I'm so mad with the Units 8 and 9 off the exam because like literally Unit 9 is just like a review of the course and adding in like, how can I fix these things? And then Unit 8 is just like kind of recapping some things you've learned in Unit 5 and Unit 7 and Unit 4 and how they're bad for the environment. Units 8 and 9 are literally my favorite and I hate why they took them off the exam. So the crossovers that I can see, I mean, they could ask you about like eutrophication on your exam, which is technically a Unit 8 topic, but you also talk about it with the nitrogen and phosphorus cycles in Unit 1. So that's how College Board can squeeze eutrophication onto the exam. Uh, you could just talk about literally like global warming if the College Board decides to get really sneaky and try and say that that's like an atmospheric pattern or something from Unit 4. Like, I really hope that they don't include these things and if they do, like, it's just annoying. Like, they took them off the exam, so they probably won't include them on the exam. But like, because you haven't learned them, there's nothing that you're gonna see on there. They're gonna be like, oh, I didn't learn Units 8 and 9, but I could tell you that LD50 is the Unit 8 topic. The College Board should not have put that on the exam. You guys won't even be able to recognize it anyways, probably. That'll probably just look like, oh, darn it, I forgot that. Don't worry about Units 8 and 9, like, don't study them. If they put it on the exam, like we can riot or something like, I, I don't care. You guys can protest against College Board and you guys can get one for all your money, like, ah. They're not gonna put Units 8 and 9 on the exam. They've said they're not going to for the past, like, since March 20th. So you don't need to study anything from Units 8 and 9. There's a reason why they took them off the exam, so you wouldn't have to study them. So don't study them. Um, Samantha says if they're on the exam, I'm gonna sue you for not telling, for telling me not to say it. Hmm, I don't see how you can have a legal basis for that because it's not anything like defamation. It's not like I'm, oh, so I don't see what you could sue me for. But I've also said that you can like just protest from the College Board and get a refund on your exam money. So I guess you can sue the College Board? I don't know. You just have to figure that out, Samantha.
Just make memes about their exam.
Yeah, just make memes about the exam to get back at them. Okay, so let's see, what other questions do we have? Do you see any questions, Cindy?
Um, did you already go over photochemical smog, thermal inversion?
Ooh, no, and I have slides about those. So Cindy, can you make my slides big by focusing on them for me?
Yeah.
Alright, so today I said that we could go over like a unit overview and I think you guys just asked about photochemical smog and thermal inversion. So I mean, I can just talk about all of Unit 7 if you want me to, but there are kind of like some intro things that I want if you need me to like talk about photochemical smog because that's kind of like a culminating thing you wanted. So there are two types of air pollutants, primary and secondary. Primary pollutants are gonna be things that we put directly into the atmosphere like SOX, NOX, carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide, particulate matter, volatile organic chemicals and chlorofluorocarbons. That was a mouthful. Secondary pollutants are things that combine with primary pollutants. So when primary pollutants combine with things like sunlight and UV rays or they combine with water in the atmosphere or even when primary pollutants combine with each other, they form secondary pollutants. So these are gonna be things like ozone, which forms from, um, any compound with uh, one oxygen and then the O2 that we already have. Uh, one oxygen and then the O two that we already have in the atmosphere, which makes O three. We have, uh, two types of acid rain here, which is going to be sulfuric acid when S O X combines with H two O, and then we have. Oh, um, uh, nitric, I think with that, well, my chemistry is rusty. It's going to be. Nitrous acid, I think. I think it's nitrous acid. Then you're going to have pans. And then you're going to have hydrogen peroxide when O two combines with H two O, and then you drop the O from some B O Cs. So, um, how does photochemical smog form? So I'm going to try to click to that. I already talked about acid rain a little bit. So photochemical smog, it's generally also known as brown smog. Photochemical smog is going to form, it's a secondary pollutant, so it's going to form when you combine, um. What is it? I think it's nitrate, nitrates combined with U V. Or. Yeah, N O X is combined with U V and, um, they can combine with a single oxygen or like an O two double oxygen molecule. Which is also ozone. So when you combine the ozone, the U V, and the N O X, then you get photochemical smog. It's like, it's kind of like a tertiary pollutant, if you ask me, because, um. You're combining a primary pollutant and a secondary pollutant, and you're combining U V rays. So photochemical smog is going to be like your tertiary pollutant. It's also going to be referred to maybe as brown smog on the exam. And photochemical smog is going to greatly affect areas like Denver and Los Angeles. So. Los Angeles is in a valley, so it kind of simulates mountains around it. Which is why the photochemical smog can get trapped between the mountains and the valley of L A. Denver is going to be surrounded by the Rocky Mountains, so that's why you have. Um, lots of photochemical smog in Denver and in L A, because of all the mountains and all the cars. Because we get N O X. Does anybody want to tell me what the main source of nitrogen oxides are from? N O X, what's the main source? Does anybody know? Where does N O X come from? Come on, guys, you should know this. It's an air pollution reduction method. It may or may not start with a C. Come on, guys. No, it's not factories. Tanya is right, it's cars. N O X comes from cars. And actually, to cut it, to come into thermal inversion, this is a great segue, N O X comes from cars and it comes from catalytic converters. So catalytic converters take the awful pollutants out of car exhaust. The catalytic converters will take carbon monoxide and nitrogen monoxide. Out of the car's pollutant system and it'll turn them into things like N O X, N O two, which is a lot less harmful. And then they'll, um, take carbon monoxide and then turn it into carbon dioxide, which is a lot less harmful than carbon monoxide. So cars are what makes N O X coal combustion does not make N O X. Coal combustion is usually associated with S O X on the exam. And then, so to get rid of S O X, you usually use wet scrubbers and electrostatic precipitators and. What? Did you say something, Cindy? Okay. Oh, and I think we lost Cindy again, guys. Uh-oh. Okay, well, I'll keep going then. So then the last thing you asked about was going to be for thermal inversion, if I could speak. So with thermal inversion, you have cool air, which is going to be close to the ground, which traps smog, photochemical smog when the warm air rises. This is going to be really common again in L A because photochemical smog is common in L A, and it's going to trap the pollutants near the ground, which is photochemical smog. So you can see here on this diagram below, which I really like, it kind of explains thermal inversion very well. The best way to explain thermal inversion is with pictures anyways. So in normal conditions, you have cold air at the top, warm air in the middle, the warm air is going to rise up to make the cold air warmer. And then the colder is going to cool down because it's near the top. But then with a thermal inversion, you're going to get, kind of get a bubble effect around the city, where the cold air is on the bottom, the warm air is in the middle, and the colder is on top again. And the smog is going to get trapped in this bubble of warm air around the city when it's surrounded by cold air. So I hope that explains thermal inversion and photochemical smog for you, since you asked about that, Alontra. So. Um, do you guys want to talk more about unit seven a little bit? We have some more slides to go over some unit seven concepts, if you guys want that, unless you guys have other questions that we can answer. Um, let me scroll up. Uh, Raina asks, do we have to know the urban island effect? No, I don't think you have to know that, because I don't know what that is. And I definitely like. Like the urban geography stuff, so I don't think that's something you really need to know for the exam. If that was one of the two F R Q topics that they picked, the urban island effect, which I doesn't even know, which I didn't even know existed until you just said it. I'm pretty sure that they probably would not make that one of the two F R Qs that they get to choose. So. Does anybody have any other APs questions? I see Tanya doesn't have any. Alontra says, thank you. Thank you for coming. And asking your questions, getting your questions answered. So you guys just want to hear a little bit more about unit seven? Oh, Sky had a question earlier. Let me scroll up and find it. Um, Cindy, you have a question? Okay. Did Cindy drop out again? Oh, gosh darn it, okay. See, this is why we have this Q and A stream, to be able to plan for our five hour cram session and make sure that all of our technology works, especially when it doesn't. So, Sky, I found your question and it was all about what kind of graphs and maps can they use on the exam? That's a great question. So let me keep going through this stuff, da-da-da-da. So stimulus analysis, that's just kind of what I like to call this. Yes, I am very aware that I wrote you a multiple choice question. Yes, I did plan this. So, um, this map is something that you could definitely see on your exam. So I forgot who was asked about biomes earlier, and I really love that, because you kind of just predicted what I was thinking, like, who just read my mind? Who read my mind about biome? Was that like, oh. Kay, Kay, you read my mind about biomes. I was thinking about it because I was like, what's a concept that I hate that I know they can give us with a stimulus on the exam? And I thought about biomes, and I was like, that's not an easy way to put this into an F R Q, so. I made it M C Q, and Cindy is back. She's coming back, I hope. So we have a map right here. Maps are going to be. Oh, I'm sorry, um, I'm just kind of talking about stimulus is on the exam for Sky. Do you want to talk more about maps you could see on the exam? I kind of have an example map right there, if you want to talk about that, Cindy.
Yeah, that one's about biomes, right? Um, other charts and graphs that might appear on the F R Q would be like population graphs, wait. That should appear it, yeah. Um. Yeah, mostly about biomes, population, then they'll probably come up like temperature, weather, and climate.
Yeah, so right here, I don't know if you can see this, it's really small, but here's a picture of some. A structure diagrams, often as population pyramid, something like this could definitely appear on your exam. Um, you can also just have different charts, like. This F R Q doesn't ask me to do any math, but it still has a chart on it. You know, that's just something to think about, and then I don't know if this one, and then this. F R Q is actually about urban sprawl and urban growth. I think that you answered this with another streamer. I think that the Nimzy people talked about this F R Q, the urban sprawl F R Q. This one has a graph and doesn't ask you to do any math, so they could definitely show you graphs and charts, but then not ask you to do math with them. So great questions, Sky.
So, uh, Raina asked what kind of experimental designs we can see on the F R Q?
Um, I can help you with this one, Cindy, if you don't know. You know?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, so.
Not really, I think great, yeah.
Okay, so on the AP exam, you're going to have two F R Qs. One of them is called proposing environmental solution, and that one's going to be your shorter F R Q. But then you have your longer first F R Q, which is going to be all about designing an experiment, designing an investigation. So that's experimental design. So what they're going to ask you to do in that F R Q is either analyze a lab experiment. Or write your own very basic lab experiment. The kinds of things that we can see these about is going to be more like, um. Let's think about this. So you can see these, um, about things like integrated pest management. We can see these about reduction of air pollution. There was, oh, an F R Q about acid rain that was on the sample F R Qs that I reviewed yesterday in an F R Q review stream. There can be a design experiment, soil sample, soil types that we talked about yesterday also. There could be one that asks you to design an experiment about any other unit five concepts about agriculture. Really, you could see a design experiment about a lot of things, but mainly think about unit four, unit five, and unit seven as your design. And experiment units. So Raina, I hope that that narrowed down what you need to study for that F R Q. I think that I'm going to take a break to take a sip of water, because my mouth is getting kind of dry.
Huh, stay hydrated. Um, I P M. Oh. So Sky, see that you've talked about your, um, experimental design about I P M, so like pest management. Um. Oh, uh, sorry, I'm going to kind of answer Tanya's. Question. So experimental designs, like Harrison said earlier, there, so like. They're like questions asking about like a solution for an environmental issue, so like, um, say. Um, question could be about like tangerine, like how people like drill oil there. So you can propose like what sort of like design, sort of solution would you offer and propose for that issue? Yeah. Does that answer your question?
My F R Q review sessions, like, uh, yesterday, I'm pretty sure you were there, when we, when we talked about the acid rain. When we read that lab report about the, um, the calcium carbonate in the limestone. That's an experimental design F R Q. They're going to be called like design and investigation, design and experiment, or experimental design. Those are the names that we can call them. The experimental design F R Q is completely separate from the proposed solution F R Q. They are not the same thing. The experimental design F R Q is going to be about designing an experiment, um, hypotheses, hypotheses. Control variables, then your proposed environmental solution F R Q is going to be about fixing an environmental problem. If you want to go back and watch the Nimzy stream, they really definitely talked about this too. Oh, thanks for saying that in the chat too, Samantha. Ah, well, Tanya, you could go watch the Nimzy replay. I think I put that up there yesterday, so you can go watch the first thirty minutes. They definitely talked about designing an experiment then, like that was their main focus for the first half. Does anybody have any other questions? Raina, by second part, do you mean the proposed environmental solution F R Q or just like a different part of the question? I'm just confused about your question, Raina, or Rhonda. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce her name. So she says, the one other than experimental design. Um, so the one other than experimental design is called, um, propose an environmental solution. So with this F R Q, they're going to ask you about an environmental problem, like we could talk about things like, um, using too many pesticides. Um, human population growth, you can also talk about things like. Um, uh, distribution of different animals. This one was really used a lot about global warming and climate change, but they won't do it this, this year, because it's not on the exam. So this one is called proposed environmental solution, and you're basically just going to be proposing a solution to fix it. Now, one thing in the Nimzy stream, they really emphasized, which is a good tip, you're proposing a solution cannot be to ban the thing. AP readers will not give you points if you say your solution is to ban clearcutting. So say your. Proposed environmental solution F R Q said, propose a solution to help reduce the clearcutting of old growth trees and forests. Your answer cannot be to ban clearcutting. That is not a correct answer. You have to pick something else. You have to pick a strategy like education or. A strategy to give people economic incentives to reduce, or you could say, talk about requiring selective cutting of only young growth trees. You kind of have to think about it that way. You can't just do, um, anything willy-nilly. If you think about the required legislation, which there's also an AP study guide about. Um, you can read about the required environmental legislation, how they fixed some issues over the years and kind of take, you know, inspiration from that. Does that help Raina and Tanya? I think. Samantha, yes, do selective cutting and star, do selective cutting instead. And even though this isn't the F R Q stream, I feel like you could still get a gold star today. I don't know. I gave any gold stars earlier, so I don't know if Cindy knows this, but in my F R Q review stream yesterday. I started giving out gold stars and Samantha got really jealous that she didn't get the first one. I think it was Morgan who got like a platinum star. But Samantha didn't get a gold star, so she got kind of upset. Let's see, I think that some people tried to answer questions earlier. Um, I don't know. I don't want to scroll too far up, so. Samantha gets the first gold star of the day. Is there anything else you guys want to talk about? Okay, while there aren't any questions. I want to do a quick, um, you know, check to see what you learned. Let's go back to talking about air pollution. So we didn't really talk about acid rain a lot, but which of these equations is correct? That shows acid rain. Equations are a big part of. Um, and equations are a big part of unit seven, especially when you talk about primary and secondary pollutants. Does anybody want to tell me what letter is correct for this equation? Uh, what letter is correct for this question? Yes, I'm very aware this is a multiple choice question, but I also don't want a bunch of random answers in the chat that I have to go screen and do all of those different things. So this is just a lot simpler to check for your understanding of the topic. So I have two Cs, one D. Looks like there's some competition in these answers. Let's go see. Uh, Aubrey says it gives me flashbacks of last year's F R Q. Oh, actually, I think I know which one you're talking about. Yep, yep. Know exactly what you're talking about. All right, so it looks like we have two Cs and a D. So Cindy, do you want to help? The person or people explain why they're wrong, or help explain why they're correct?
I see one explanation already, Raina. Yeah, because, uh, uh, acid deposition comes from sulfuric acid. And so then to see, yeah.
Yeah, so now, okay, now everybody chooses C, but that's just because acid rain is a secondary pollutant. Like we talked about on one of the previous slides that I can show you real quick, which was. We talked about acid rain, H two S O four, H two S O three is going to be a secondary pollutant, acid rain. So this chemical equation right here shows you that the correct answer is going to be. Equation C. So equation D, what does equation D make? Um, that's just not a correct chemical equation. It's not balanced. So, yeah, let's move on. So here's another question, the same answer choices. Except D actually has, um, correct answers this time, has the correct products. You can see how it's kind of in a different color. Um, what's the answer to this question? So when I talked about catalytic converters reducing air pollution in cars, this is the question. What's the answer to my question? I can't talk today. And Cindy, you can take this one to explain too. After people put enough answers in the chat. Okay, Raina says B. Uh, Tanya, I changed it just to have the correct chemical formula, because in the last question it says, what is the correct chemical equation? So, um, I didn't just flip the products, I actually changed and balanced it. Like, I think the other one had like two H two O or something, it just wasn't balanced. Hmm, no. So is Raina the only one who has a suggestion? Well, I think that that means that Raina is going to go to, going to get a gold star today. Because she's the only one with the correct answer. B is the correct answer. Do you want to explain why? Uh, Cindy?
Sure, um, so it's B because. there's a catalytic converter that keeps NOX and carbon monoxide out of the air.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
So it turns carbon monoxide into carbon dioxide. And NOX into nitrogen gas, like we find in the atmosphere. Seventy-eight percent of our atmosphere is N2, so if N2 is bad for us, I think that we would all be pretty dead by now. Yeah. Uh, do you wanna explain what catalytic converters are?
Nope. Sorry.
Wait, no, that's fine, that's fine, I can take it. So, catalytic converters are inside of cars, and basically, they take the really harmful pollutants that come from cars burning gasoline and make them into less harmful pollutants. So as you can see in chemical, I haven't even flipped it to show you the right answer. The correct answer is B, like we just talked about. And it's flipping very slowly, but it takes the pollutant nitrous oxide, which is very harmful to the environment. NOX creates photochemical smog, you don't want that. And then it changes it into, into a harmless gas in the environment that seventy percent of our atmosphere is made of. It also takes carbon monoxide, which is very, very dangerous and can cause carbon monoxide poisoning and suffocate you. And it turns into CO2. It's a harmful pollutant because it's a greenhouse gas and it warms the earth, but CO2 is a lot less harmful than carbon monoxide. If we had as much carbon monoxide in the environment as we had CO2 in the environment, uh, that would not be good for the future of our earth and the future of your life. So I hope that explains everything.
Yeah. Um, and I think the rest of the answer choices, um, they're actually, like, the ones that aren't correct, they're actually like reversed, right? Like, the non-harmful chemicals turning into the harmful ones.
Oh, yeah, 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 totally. So yeah, if you didn't know what a catalytic converter was, you saw three of these answers that turned non-harmful chemicals into harmful chemicals. And then you see that this one turns harmful chemicals into non-harmful chemicals, the opposite. It does something good. So, Tanya, if you're still confused a little bit about catalytic converters, let me pull up my slide on the reduction of air pollution. So it says catalytic converters take awful pollutants out of car exhaust. You also have wet scrubbers and electrostatic precipitators, which reduce pollution from coal burning power plants. So if you wanna take a picture of this slide, Tanya, just so you can review what these things are, but yeah. So, uh, Skye, there probably will not be an FRQ that makes you write out a chemical equation. Chemistry is not the main fundamental study of APs. And also, I don't see how you could use a chemical equation to design an investigation or to, um, propose a solution. I don't really see how you can use chemical equations to do this, so. Just my opinion. Okay, do you guys have any other questions?
Oh, um. For the FRQs, would there be questions about, like, diseases coming from air pollution?
Um, so actually, Cindy, that's a really good question. So, um, in Unit 7, you do learn about some human air, air, human health effects of pollutants. So, um, the main one that you need to know is asthma. Asthma is like the only thing you need to know as an air pollutant. You, you kinda need to know lung cancer because that's just like, that's nonspecific, that's just something that everything causes. But then you also have emphysema, which is caused by a few certain pollutants, asthma. So, carbon monoxide causes carbon monoxide poisoning, that's the only special one. And how that works is your body breathes in carbon monoxide and it thinks, oh, this is about to be really scary, so. Your body breathes in carbon monoxide, thinking that it's oxygen, so it goes into your lungs like oxygen does. And on, and around your lungs, there are these little sacs called alveoli. Oh, I really hope I pronounced that right, and I'm sure I didn't. Um. And basically, that's where the oxygen from your lungs enters your bloodstream, so you can have oxygenated blood. That's how the blood carries the oxygen to the other parts of your body. And then the oxygenated blood goes through the heart, and then the, gives some oxygen to the heart, and then it carries oxygen to the rest of the body so it can function. So, carbon monoxide enters your lungs. See, I just breathed in oxygen, but my body could easily think that it was carbon monoxide. And when the carbon monoxide enters your lungs, it'll enter your alveoli just like the oxygen does. You get strangled, basically, from the inside out because the carbon monoxide enters your bloodstream. And then the carbon monoxide doesn't have anywhere to go, it just follows the oxygen path. And because the heart thinks it's getting oxygen, it'll get carbon monoxide. And the other parts of your body will also be carbon monoxide, and you can kind of like suffocate, basically, from carbon monoxide poisoning. Uh, um, carbon dioxide poisoning is not really a disease by air pollutants that they test you on. So, don't mention carbon dioxide poisoning, because that's a really complicated topic, and that's not really, that's not an air pollutant issue, that's a, that's kind of different. That's kinda just like, CO2 poisoning is more like chemical warfare than it is air pollution. Oh, and then health effects of pollutants, you have particulate matter, which causes basically every lung disease. So, particulate matter can cause a lot of things, because it's a really wide range of things. Basically, particulate matter is any like solid particles of things that are in the air. So it's every air pollution that's not a gas. So any pieces of anything that gets into your lungs is bad, because you can either like tear up your lungs, it can enter your bloodstream, the pieces of stuff can just like stay in your lungs and give you emphysema, you can have asthma. And then also, things like SOX, VOCs, methane, and heavy metals cause bronchitis. Yeah, and PM also is a different size of the 2.5, which is another reason why it causes so many things. Um, Tanya, you bring up asbestos. Asbestos is not an outdoor air pollutant, so they usually don't test the health effects of, um, indoor air pollutants. The course exam description only requires you to know the human health effects of outdoor air pollutants. Indoor air pollutants, you're only just required to know that they exist and that they're indoor air pollutants. Your indoor air pollutants are gonna be asbestos, mold, and radon. You kinda just have to know that they exist. You're not required to know the human health effects of those for your test. Uh, mercury is a heavy metal. So that's included in the things that cause bronchitis. Mercury is not as much of an indoor air pollutant as it is outdoor, and really, mercury is more of a terrestrial pollutant in water streams and in food anyways. So I don't see the. Oh, sorry, Kim.
Oh, I was gonna, uh, mention like, in addition to mercury, there's also methane that like goes into water.
Yeah, true. Um, so Skye asked me to go over the indoor air pollutants again. So at the bottom of this slide right there, we're kind of covering it up. But there are two types of air pollutants, indoor air pollutants. You have, in the developed countries, you have radon, asbestos, lead, and sick building syndrome, SBS. But in developing countries, you just could have every air pollutant just indoor. And the main reason that that causes this is because they don't have electric and gas stovetops like we do, they basically have to have fires indoors, and they burn really bad things sometimes. I'm not even gonna get into it, because some of those might just gross you out, but um, you know. Those are your air pollutants right there at the bottom of the slide. I hope you can see them like under us or whatever. But also, um, I'm gonna link this slide to the resources of this stream, once it's over, so you can download the slides later too. Um, Tanya, my teacher gave me a huge list, but heavy metals were listed as indoor, along with radon and formaldehyde. Um, so. Hmm. Okay, heavy metals are more of a Unit 8 concept anyways. I personally don't think that they're indoor air pollutant. If your teacher thinks that they're your indoor air pollutants, then listen to your teacher. But I think that they're more of like terrestrial and aquatic pollutants, which is Unit 8, which you don't even need to know. And formaldehyde, yes, formaldehyde is an indoor air pollutant, because you find formaldehyde in a lot of different furniture linings. Like, old pieces of furniture are gonna have formaldehyde, which gives you your colors. And then the old furniture sits for a really long time and goes through weathering and erosion, basically, inside of your own house, because, you know, your people are so messy, so then you kind of have, um, you know, the formaldehyde gets out of the furniture, out of the lining, and then it ends up causing bad health effects for you.
You might also wanna include like paint, like peeling off and chipping inside your house.
Yeah, lead is the reason why developing air pollutants. Lead is a heavy metal, but it's specific because it's lead paint, just like Cindy just said. Lead paint is only old paint, and it's now only sold as an outdoor paint, like very few stores still sell lead paint. It's really effective because it keeps the color for a really long time, and that's why we used to use lead in paint before we knew it was bad for you. And they do still sell some, very few lead paints, but like when you buy them, like your store has to like have you sign a thing that says like, I will only use this outdoors. Um, paint also has VOCs, right? Yes. Yes, some paints do have VOCs, you have to be very careful on like what you buy, what you use inside your house, what you use outdoor. Read the label on your paint. If this is outdoor, it only goes outside. If it says indoor, you can use it anyways, but indoor paint is more expensive generally. Um, oh, yeah. I have a four, so, um, if you guys have any more questions, you can ask them, but I think we're gonna wrap up soon, Cindy. You can take the last few questions, and Cindy's gonna be the one that's gonna end the stream too. So, whenever we decide that we're done, and we say thank you and all that good stuff, then we can, you know.
All right, thank you guys for coming. Thanks, Harrison.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, I hope you guys see us again on the Five Hour Cram stream. I am scrolling through the questions, and I do see a question at the five-hour finale that I do wanna answer real quick. Um, for the five-hour finale, we're reviewing the whole course. We're gonna also create a tangible takeaway that I'm not gonna reveal for you. We're gonna give you something you can take away that you actually might be able to use on your exam. While I don't recommend using notes on your exam, because it really just wastes time, and you have a ton of points on your FRQ that you need to get, you can definitely use it to study like ten minutes before your exam. So we're gonna be giving you something in the Five Hour Cram, so I really hope you bypass. Um, there are some streams between now and the Five Hour Cram, there's a cram session tonight with Mr. Joshua Nielsen, I believe. And I think that before the Five Hour Cram, there might be, I, there was one more stream next week. There's another stream next week, so I hope to see you guys then. Thank you so much for coming, and Cindy, you can end the stream when you're ready.
Okay. Bye, guys.